Evening councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please stand to receive the Town Mayor of Biddles, councillor Nigel Yates, Deputy Mayor of Biddles, councillor Adrian Lawton and the Chief Officer, Mrs Sarah Hayden. Upon Reverend Darren Fraser to offer a prayer for tonight's meeting.
Been thinking for a few days now about what I could offer to at the beginning of the meeting and this is what came to me and that's for you brothers and sisters, this is St Paul speaking to the church. Never tire of doing what is good. The word never tire of doing what is good. It's difficult sometimes, isn't it, when you're constantly seeking to do good and yet there seems to be so many or so many challenges around us which maybe doesn't seem so good. We've got some national elections coming up and I don't know whether I'm supposed to mention that, but I asked one young person that what did they think about the forthcoming elections and who would they vote for? Well, I'm not going to tell you that because they never told me, but what they did say was, I'm not too sure. It seems to me like there's two big main parties. And I'm not too sure at the moment which one is better than the other. Now, I'm aware that there's a national thing taking place, but what I also mentioned was there are individual people working hard in their areas, in their constituents and and they are really good people who I believe are seeking to do good. And so often we can all get painted with a national picture and yet as individuals we're working so hard in our individual areas. And so tonight, I am thankful for the councillors and everything that Biddles Town Council does for the area. I'm greatly encouraged by the work that takes place, the hard work that takes place behind the scenes. And I'm also very thankful for the time and energy that all of you give to the area and of course to this town. And so I just want to encourage you tonight that as you are having your discussions, whatever political persuasions you are, you're reminded of this. And that's for you brothers and sisters. Never tire of doing what is good. And on that note, shall we pray? Lord, I thank you for Biddles Town Council and I do thank you, Lord, for the work that takes place, not only locally but nationally with MPs and councillors, Lord. I just thank you for the dedication and the work that takes place. So often we can hear about the negative things that are happening. But I thank you, Lord, for the dedicated men and women across our nation who never tire of doing what is good and right. And so I pray for your blessing upon this meeting. On all that will take place, on all that is said tonight, we place it before you in the most precious name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. Please be seated. Good evening, everybody, fellow councillors. Just got the usual announcement to read out. This meeting has been recorded and will be uploaded to the Biddles Town Council YouTube page. The aim is that decision making should be transparent and in the public domain, which will involve more of our community and local democracy. By being in this council chamber, you are consenting to being recorded and for your image to be added to YouTube. The images and sound may be used for training purposes. Any views expressed are the speaker's own and do not necessarily reflect the views of Biddles Town Council. Please view the guidance on recording and public meetings policy if you need more information. Thank you. I'd just like to confirm that the attendees will be named in the minutes unless otherwise required. Item one on the agenda is public participation. And these are five-minute slots in total, which has been quite a burden and discussion which has been had over the last few weeks. And can we start with the representatives from Staffordshire, please?
Good evening all.
Would you mind introducing yourself first?
Old enough to know, Jackson of Dog.
Sure, sorry. My name is Liam. I'm one of the local PCSOs for Biddles. I won't take up much of your time. I've structured figures for the local area. I'll start with crime figures. So our serious and acquisitive crime covers anything from theft of motor vehicles, theft from motor vehicles, burglaries, and sorts of offences. Figures for Biddles is in the last three months, we've had 25 incidents which fall under the serious quizzed crime category. In example, so for the whole of the Mullins, in the last three months, we've had 109 incidents compared to somewhere like Chedle. They've had 43, we've had 25. So we are quite low in the stats for the serious quizzed crime. For theft, over the Mullins, we've had in the last three months 186 incidents. Out of them, 186, 35 of them are for the Biddles area. So again, compared to the other areas across the Mullins, we are significantly quite low. Antitotal behaviour for the area. For the last 12 months, so from this time 12 months ago, we are down by 32% for the local area and antisocial behaviour. A breakdown of that is for the last three months, again, across the Mullins, we've had 158 incidents. Only 44 of them are for Biddles compared to Leake, who have had 90. So again, across the stats, we are showing quite a significant lower than other areas. So have our repeat areas for ASB and Biddles are around the St Spreys and High Street area, which locally we are aware of as a target. And that's everything from our end. Other than any questions for the town.
Yes, if you don't mind, I'll go first. Just one question. And it's really about procedure. Is that I notice as quite a few of us, I'm sure, do see a lot of things being cropped up on Facebook, seeing somebody where this incident or having seen this person or this bit of suspicion. How is the best way to communicate that as sort of ongoing intelligence to the police? Because communicating with the police, especially information which isn't a 999 call is quite difficult. Is there a Facebook page? Is there a fast track? Is there...?
Yeah, exactly. And that's probably one of the biggest questions we're asked by the public because there is a lot of information people want to learn, isn't it? But don't think it's worth picking up the phone and potentially sitting in a queue. So there is obviously this, if it's an absolute emergency, it's 999. If it's a non-emergency, it's 101. You're doing it by the phone. If not, if you go to Staffordshire Police's website, I think it's staffpolice.co.uk. On the homepage, there is a blue box which says report an incident. If you click on that, it's basically the same as 101, but you do it all tapping and it will still come through to us exactly the same as an incident on the computer. Whether it's just intelligence or it's an incident that's happened, you can report it through the website, which is probably the easiest and fastest way. So that's the way I recommend to the public when asking that question.
And you can upload videos and photographs and things?
So when reporting, you can upload. Our control room, who sits in Stafford, will usually ask if there's anything like that. I believe, I've never done it myself, so don't quote me, but I believe there is a way for uploading photos and videos. But if not, once the incident comes through to the local office, we can get in touch and ask for them photos and videos anyway.
Okay, okay. Lovely. Thank you. Pastor Jones, how are you?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thanks for putting it in line. You may recall at the last council meeting, I gave quite a hard time about parking or payments. Yes, I'm all. Still the same. Nothing's happened. I haven't seen any tickets. Nobody's reported having a ticket. It's still happening. It's still a problem. Just reminding you that it's still there. Pass it on, please.
No problem.
councillor Smith?
Just as far as, just from what councillor Yates was saying. If it's not specifically related to an incident, so we're not trying to report a crime per se, but if it's sort of general soft intelligence that we've had. So a business in the street doesn't want to give their information, but they've got information relating to something that's happened. How is the best way of communicating that? Can we email the control room email to pass on that soft intelligence, things like that?
Emailing the control room email? Probably wouldn't do it just because they probably get that many emails a day. I would either recommend through the police website or if they want to do it and remain anonymous, they can do it through Crime Stoppers. Or if it is just soft intelligence for the local area, there's always access to the local officers' emails. So they could email us directly.
Some issues with us possibly having the emails of local offices before. So I don't think we have those, but possibly through the web.
Get all that to Sarah and get them sent out, don't you?
Thank you. That's news.
Okay, yes, we have those. Okay. Anybody else? Nope. Excellent. Thank you. Have a sweet time. Thank you for coming. Okay, that's within time. County council representative, if councillor Flunder would like to step forward.
Thank you, Chair. I'll do my best. I know I've only got two and a half minutes or less.
Two minutes now.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I say good evening all, but I think that's a good saying. Never mind. Right. Not much has happened. You'll be glad to know, or not glad to know, which has been nice this week and last week. Just a few things. Some more economic surveys and things have come out, which we picked up on recently and the employment rate is at 2.9%, which is still quite a long way down on what it should be. And in fact, figures here have fallen very, very slightly against the national general increase. I found some more information out about if you're interested on that one. And I was hoping at some time that we could do something for you here, as we've done up at district, about the road dressing. We had a seminar, online seminar. I don't know whether you're certain I did or not, but I found it very interesting. And I'm hoping that we can open that up because I think that will answer a lot of your questions about how we do our job at the county council during the summer months. I was amazed at the four different ways of just doing surface dressing. And there's about five different types of break and crews and all the rest of it. So as I say, I think that'd be something, if we could let it go out. It's been recorded already, so it's a question now of just being able to allow the people to have access. So I will try and do that. There's some other elements like the cost of living advice and everything else that's available on there at the moment. And then in terms of events and things, by the way, John, I do agree with you about parking or payments. That stops our crews from doing quite a lot of the work that they should be doing, both surface dressing and grass cutting. And that's something that I've seen noticeable now in my new position. And it's something that they can't really get sorted out because people just leave their cars there for the whole day or and they can't get them to be removed. So they have to carry on and do the best they can with the vehicles in situ, which allows a lot of other things go wrong. And then more people complain about the fact that they can't get the access to the areas they need to. So that's just an aside. And then finally, as I say, there's an event, two events coming up, which I just wanted you to make aware of. There's the concert orchestra that's performing on June the 29th. And this Saturday, the Biddles youth zone are doing their sort of summer opening of the new garden after the fire and everything else. So I'm hoping that some of you will be there as well. And I've had some other comments about surface dressing, which I'm trying to sort out on some of the roads that the carers have us down the road. I'm going to try and do something on that one as well. Because while the tarmacs stay down, if people are turning their tyres on it, it tends to rip holes into the new surface that's only just been put down. It takes a bit of time for it to cure, which is why they then come back and do all the road markings up to about two or three weeks afterwards, again, depending on weather. So I'm just trying to get that resolved, as much as I can do here locally as well. That's it, Chair. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Does the county council employ a monitoring officer on the quality of workmanship by the contractors when they're doing patching around Biddles?
They do. And this is one of the issues that we have. One of the issues I've noticed recently is that people think that the patching that they do, first of all, with the road markings laid up, that that's the finished job. It's not. What happens afterwards is that that's when that gets surface dressed and a lot of the unsanct gets cancelled out if it's being surface dressed. And people aren't aware that it's done in two or three stages. Okay. So that's why sometimes we have to live with a slightly problem, you know, because it's not perfectly flat. And that's because of the equipment that they have and the tar and everything else that goes there. But apart from that, I think if you could see what we know on that video, that might answer some of these questions that you have got. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. Just my report, just to reiterate what councillor Flunder said. There's potentially four stages to a road repair. And each one has a time delay in between. There's the repair to the structural integrity around ironworks. Then there's the patching repair. Then there's the surface dressing repair. And then, believe it or not, but it's to do with how the surface dressing is actually applied. They can't do it the other way around. Then the ironworks are raised to the level of the surface dressing. And that does, there is quite a gap between the surface dressing work and the raising of the ironworks to allow the surface dressing to cure. It's a new type of surface dressing. It's called micro asphalt. It has a 10-year warranty with it. So, you know, and it's done by a subcontractor, so they are liable for anything which goes wrong in that 10 years. So we shall see. We'll see what it's like after seven or eight years and hope it lasts the other time. The only thing I want to say, which is also related to roads, because obviously Withersby and Perdah coming up to a general election period, there's very few standard meetings going on, is New Street is going to have to have a full road closure for seven days. Now, that will start as soon as the school holidays start, which is the 22nd of July. That's what it's programmed for. And I think, and I'm just looking for a nod, I think they're working in the part lane in the same, immediately after, at the same time. Yeah, hopefully that will sweep around the whole cross. And just one comment, which we've been talking to councillor Garvey about. We have got an issue towards the top of Woodhouse Lane where there's a recurring pothole and there's water constantly leaking out of it. What we've got to do? Liaising with the highways team to try and identify the cause. We don't know whether that is effectively spring water or whether it's something to do with Seven Trent. So we're looking into that. We're aware that everything else is marked. Well, that's a bit of a work in progress on that particular one. So apart from, obviously, as aware that the bypass is being resurfaced in the next month, which will cause a degree of delays at certain points in time. We'll see. Councillor Jones?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. You've answered both the questions I was going to ask, actually, which was excellent. On New Street about that pothole. I didn't realise it was going to be seven days, but if it's going to be seven days, it's going to be seven days. As long as it's well signed up beforehand, then I'm sure that we'll have to work around it. It's going to impact on our three boroughs as well, I spoke, so as long as it gets fixed.
Yes.
You work on it.
To be honest, that was the reason put up to try and do small, little intermediate repairs was that they really were reluctant to close it because it needed the complete closure. It was almost sort of appealing to me to allow it to be closed. The right time, you've got to do it. It's now, you're slaving. Yeah. Any other questions? Excellent. Thank you very much.
Sorry, January 22nd of July, yeah?
January 22nd of July is the date at this moment in time. With the permitting, always subject to slipage.
Caveat, caveat, caveat.
Well, it's, but the important caveat is that it's been done in the school holidays and not being done forward because of the disruption with sack clauses. So if it is delayed, there's still plenty of, there's still an adequate window within the school holidays, which I think for a complete road closure like that is obviously an important consideration. So, you know, I can't fault them for that. Okay, moving on. Item two on the agenda is apologies. Have we had any apologies?
Quite a number, yes. Councillor Salt, Paulie Wood, councillor Redfern is joining us, but he'll be a bit late. He's coming straight from another meeting. Councillor Brady and councillor Harp.
Thank you. And item three, declarations of interest. The first part to declare any disclosable procurny interests and dispensations. Councillor Smith?
Just to note that I'm named in the accounts page just in relation to a receipt I was reimbursed for the event that we had at the town hall.
Lovely, thank you. And to declare any other, councillor Rogers?
They're just from my perspective.
Thank you. And to declare any other disclosable interest. Councillor Harp?
Member of Mullins Partnership.
Okay, lovely. I'm a member of Mullins Partnership. Item four, two minutes to approve and sign the minutes of the annual meeting. Just to go over those. We'll just go through those. Present, also in attendance. Item one, election of town mayor and mayor making ceremony. Item two, apologies. Item three, declarations of interest. Item four, annual meeting of the town council on the 10th of May 2022. Item five, election of deputy mayor. Item six, constitution documents and confirmation of key decisions. Item seven, financial mandate banking arrangements. Item eight, the minutes. Item nine, to confirm the design for the miners' lanterns at St John's Road. Item 10, to approve the service level agreement with Stafford's Mullins District Council in regards to the shared prosperity funding. If approved, this will enable discussions to progress regarding the tender process for the development of the town hall frontage. Item 11, accounts and finance. And the meeting ended at 7:20. So can I have a proposal for those minutes, please? Councillor Jones has proposed and is seconded by councillor Harp. Thank you very much.
Point of order, councillor Jones went at that meeting. The 14th? The one we've just passed the minutes for. Turn off. Oh, no, I wasn't. Oh, we're in hospital.
Can we have another, can we have another proposal, please?
Then for councillor.
Oh, councillor Smith. Councillor Smith beat you too, is I'm afraid. Can we have a show of hands for acceptance of those minutes, please?
I didn't vote, Jack.
So moving on to approve and sign the minutes, the notes of the annual town meeting held on Tuesday the 21st of May 2024. Present, in attendance, one apologies. Two, to confirm the minutes of the last annual town meeting held on Tuesday the 23rd of May 2023. Three, presentation of the annual report and achievements from 2023-24 by the town mayor. Four, presentation on town council current areas of work, including feedback from other organisations celebrating anniversaries this year. Five, open forum to discuss any other issues raised by Neil Leckford present. And the meeting ended at 7:02. No comments? Have a proposal for that, please. Councillor Garvey, seconded by councillor Harp. You were there, councillor Garvey, I think.
Yes, it says I will see you. It wasn't I, it was.
A show of hands, please. Unanimous, thank you very much. Two, to receive the minutes of the planning committee, which was held on Tuesday the 21st of May 2024.
Give those minutes, please, Chair.
Present, in attendance, one, election of chair and deputy chair. Two, apologies. Three, declaration of interest. Four, minutes of previous meeting. Five, standing agenda. I can consider any proposed sites for local listings. Six, new planning applications. Seven, to consider supplementary applications received since the agenda was created. Eight, to review new decisions and notices received from the district council. And nine, appeals. The meeting ended at 8pm. They've been proposed by councillor Garvey. Have a second, please. Councillor Thatcher. And can I have a show of hands, please? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Finally, minutes to receive the minutes of the town and community meeting held on Tuesday the 21st.
Can I have those, please, Mr Mayor?
You certainly can, councillor Smith. Present, in attendance, election of chair and deputy chair. Apologies, declarations of interest. Minutes, part to confirm the draft of all the people's study document to confirm next steps. Six, to confirm ongoing discussions in relationship to CCTV provision. Seven, to consider Biddles Works Together projects. Eight, to receive an update in relationship to the station road bench and current parking area. Nine, to receive an update on the safe place scheme. Then to receive verbal updates on 2024 events. And the meeting closed at 9:15. So they've been proposed by councillor Smith. Can I have a second, please? Councillor Garvey. Have a show of hands to accept those minutes, please. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. And finally, is to approve and sign the minutes of the finance strategy meeting.
Councillor Garvey.
Actually, can we move those minutes, please, last night?
Yes. Councillor Garvey?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to have a serious concern with some of the issues that are raised on the minutes, but I believe they're covered under separate items, item 10 on the agenda. It's like the point of clarification, the reservation about those particular items regarding public participation in council. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. And yes, they are covered later in the agenda and there will be, there will be an opportunity to debate. Lovely. Thank you. So the minutes of the finance strategy and management committee meeting held on Tuesday the 28th of May 2024. Present, in attendance, election of chair and deputy chair. Apologies, three declarations of interest, four minutes, five account matters, six, audit, seven, Biddles Works Together, eight, standing orders, nine, to receive feedback on the garden festival and confirm costs. Then to confirm recommendations from the following, from the following working groups, which was the miners' lanterns working group and the town hall mining memorial working group. Eleven, policies, twelve, standing items. Standing agenda items. And then the confidential, confidential items, we had item 13, item 14, item 15, item 16, and the meeting ended at 8:10pm. They were proposed by councillor Rogers. Can I have a second, please? Councillor Parks?
Sorry, no, I wasn't.
Oh, councillor Harp. Sorry. Can I have a show of hands accepting those, please? Excellent. Thank you. Give me a second to time those. Councillor Garvey abstained. Nice communication. Quite a busy month, actually, for the first one. Just rattling through what we did. We obviously did the mayor making. I went to Conlottons Mayor Making the following day. That was quite interesting. It's a slightly different type of event. Opened Chico's K9 Designs on the High Street. Glad to see a new business expanding and growing. Visited the Repair Cafe, which councillor Hopkins is heavily involved in. And there was some circus events which were circus train events which were running now. It was quite entertaining. Popped up to Biddles Moor, councillor Jones's territory to have a look at the new car boot sale at the village hall. And also popped into the Methodist Spring Fair and Plant Cell, which is very good. On the 21st, we had the 50 years anniversary of Biddles Town Council. Quite a humbling experience with all the ex-mayors present. A little bit of imposter syndrome there, to be perfectly honest, but we muddle through and may do. Going into June, the D-Day 80 at the town hall was an absolutely superb event. Absolutely, very, very well attended, very well organised, absolute credit to everybody who was involved on that. Superb. Followed the next day by Conlton Civic Service and a, and a parade through the High Street of Conlton, Lawton Street, is it? And to a jazz band. I had some earplugs in for that. And then it was over to Staff's University to do some judging on their psychology students, which quite a daunting prospect. And then on the sixth, very poignant, we had two services with regards to the D-Day. One down at the Senate after eleven o'clock, which was very well attended and very well organised. And a D-Day tribute at the front and lighting the Lampret piece, which again was a very nice service. I enjoyed that. And then to really round off the 50th year anniversary, it was last Saturday, it was the 50th year anniversary of the Biddlefarmer's Swimming Club. So they had a gala and the leisure centre was absolutely packed out. So that was temperature was a little bit high, wasn't it, John, to be honest? But the party night was very, very good, very good. And moving on to events. And I think councillor Flunders just mentioned that the zone up on Church Road are reopening the garden on Saturday, aren't they?
Yes.
Ten till, ten till two on Saturday. So anybody would like to attend there, I'll, I'll make an appearance there. It's well dressing and a dog show on Saturday as well at Biddlemore. So if anybody's got a dog and you want to take it up there, then entries can be taken on the day. I don't know who the head judge is, but we'll find out. There's also on the 16th, a walk around Biddlemore, which starts well, hopefully the weather's set fine and that'll follow a, a nice new circular path. And I think there's a little bit of a history talk as well. So if anybody's up for that, I think that'll be quite an entertaining walk. There's the Kate, if it's pronounced like that, textile event, which is happening on the 29th in the town hall, twelve thirty till four thirty. And on the 30th, and you're all welcome, emphasis on tea and cakes. This is the civic ceremony, the mayor's civic ceremony, mind, at the Methodist Chapel on Station Road. We're meeting here at half past one, so photographs on the town hall steps, weather permitting. We'll have a walk down to the Methodist Chapel because it's a little bit tighter at the front there. So I'm sure we'll have a couple of volunteers for taking up the rear and taking up the front. But it'd be a pleasure to see pleasure to see you all on that. But that's my meager announcements. And I've also been asked, shall I read this letter out?
I can just have a copy.
Everybody have a copy of this letter? I'll read it out for the purposes of you cubers. Oh, I'll read it out. Yes, Sarah. Will you please pass on to Jodie and the team, my sincere thanks and admiration for the superb celebration you took such trouble to organise to commemorate 50 years of Biddletown Council. It was a real delight to see so many of my predecessors and successors as mayor of Biddle and it must have been quite a challenge to track them all down. It was entertaining to stroll back through the years with them, grunted by the slideshow you organised. It was also very evident that a lot of care and thought had gone into getting the throne exactly right. I shall treasure the booklet produced tomorrow, the occasion, together with a unique commemorative badge. Biddletown Council is special and without its guidance, guidance, support and dogged lobbying, we would not have evolved from an unremarkable little mining town to the garden town of Staffordshire with a well developed town centre boasting almost 100% occupancy, a very pretty sweeping bypass and now a clear direction to travel through its impressive development plan. The next 50 years has a hard act to follow. Once again, many thanks for all your hard work. Warmest mess wishes, Grant Harris, who was mayor of Biddle, 1996 to 1997. I think that's very well. So moving on to the agenda. Item six. Standing agenda items. Six A, to receive an update on the management of town council assets. So over to the chief officer.
Thank you. There isn't really anything significant to mention here, except that we have launched the mining memorial tile brick slip scheme. For those of you on Facebook, you'll know that already. And but the information is on the website and those who wish to remember an individual who is involved in mining across all Staffordshire can purchase a brick slip with the name on which will form part of the redevelopment which is the town hall. So we've started that yesterday, launched that.
Thanks, Lige.
Yeah, thank you for that. And the amount of Facebook traffic it has manufactured. But it's good, it's good. People are talking, some for, some against, but you'll always get that. Could I ask that, with it being Father's Day on Sunday, that we stick a little Facebook post out to say, how about a Father's Day present? A brick for Father's Day. And just give the gift a boost, like we're on board. Fifty, fifty two months. And that's really, after a few days, so it's going really, really well. I'm really pleased with how it is going. Can I ask as well, if we could go in on town hall assets? Let's have a, a quick confidential item either at, at the end of the town council meeting or the other one. It's just a room and I was wondering whether we've got any clarity on that particular room. I don't want to do it in the public domain.
Think we can, yes. We've got no issues with that. Okay, six B, to receive an update on health and safety activities, including risk management.
Thank you. So since our last meeting, we've had the air conditioning service, the fire extinguisher service has gone on today. Unfortunately, that's going to mean the purchase of quite a few new fire extinguishers as those come to the end of their lives, but that will go to the Finance Strategy Management Committee for consideration. And councillor Holsworth has been in to carry out the latest round of his reviews and spent a long time looking at our risk assessments and the kind of management documents that we've got in place.
Councillor Smith.
Salt isn't here. Have we had an update on the rack? Or yet?
Item six, C, to receive an update on Biddlef Works Together project. Can I?
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting for a couple of months. Quite a number of the organisations have paused their activities whilst the weather's a bit warmer to give their volunteers a break. But we're due to meet again on the 3rd of July. They're all welcome.
And item seven, to receive an update on outside bodies attended since April, 2024. Have any outside bodies then? Councillor Hart.
Yeah, the Moore's partnership has not met since we last spoke.
Councillor Rogers?
Yeah, just very briefly. I went to the SPCA, which you know, which Stafford, which that's the old Pancridge this time. It's like 35 miles each way, but the reason I'm saying that, there's been expansion quite a lot over at Pancridge. We like the flagship of that committee in many ways. And I think the chief officer, chief officer, they've asked if she'll be a monitoring officer of that. I don't know if she accepted the post or not at the moment. Let's see. All systems go. Thank you.
Would you like to comment on that or pass it those moments in time if you can pass, if you like?
No, what councillor Rogers is alluding to is that somebody from the clerks group on the SLCC will be invited, I think formally, to attend the SPCA as well. So it might not be me, but I think this they're trying to, yes, well. Trying to have some crossover between the Society of Local Council Claws and Staffordshire Power Council Association to make sure that we both groups have provided best advice to both councillors and clerks. So I'll bring more information. I'll sort of cut it for you.
Okay.
Your name is mentioned and Biddleford mentioned, that's all. Thank you.
Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, not strictly a meeting, but I don't know where else I would say this in this meeting. I just wanted to make you all aware that the defibrillators, all the defibrillators in Biddle are now, following the award of the contract in May to AD Donate, are now being looked at to buy AD Donate. They're all in good working order, all got good dates and everything on the pads. Batteries are all good. They've now taken them over. I also just say while I'm stood on my feet, the one at the, at the zone was used last week, back end of last week. And successfully, I have to say. But the ambulance service have managed to lose it. The crew took it away and Jamie from AD Donates is frantically trying to track it down. We will find it, but, and we will kill them. At the moment, the one doesn't have anything in the box, I'm afraid. We'll do it as soon as we can. Probably will do it as soon as we can.
And what I would like to say on behalf of the town council is to commend the response and the efforts of the staff at the Eastern Community Zone for their response and using it.
Really.
It's super well. And that needs putting on the record. Yeah. Councillor Rogers?
Yeah, just maybe. It just shows the need for these defibrillators in the bill. The one on Horse Road, Plainfield, was activated a few weeks ago. And, and you know, it wasn't, it wasn't a death at the end, but it was required. And so it definitely needs to be there. Thank you.
Excellent. No, thank you. Moving on then, to confirm the recommendation from the annual town meeting. Nice. Oh, I've missed one, sorry. Item. Oh, yes, item eight, item eight, sorry. Yes, the 2024 annual report draft document attached. They've all got a copy of the annual report.
Annual return.
Annual return.
Yeah.
Can I need to add on that?
Yes, quite a lot.
What have we got to do now? That'll be all that for me, guys.
So item A is to complete section one of the annual return, which everyone's got. So you need to read the assertions out loud, confirming that there are sound systems of internal control, including arrangements for preparation and counting. If you get approval on each of those items, answer eight.
Right. So I'm sorry about this because this could take a short while. Annual government statement, 2023, 2024, Biddletown Council. Item one. We have put in place arrangements for effective financial management during the year and for the preparation of the accounting statements. Are we in agreement?
To propose in a second.
Have a proposal for that, please? Councillor Hart and seconded. Councillor Redfern. Can I have a show of hands? Thank you. Can I tick the box? Yes, just to tick. Item two. We maintained an adequate system of internal audit, including measures designed to prevent and detect fraud and corruption and reviewed its effectiveness. Can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Hart. And councillor Jones, seconded. Can I have a show of hands, please, to accept that? Thank you. Item three, we took all reasonable steps to assure ourselves that there are no matters of actual or potential non-compliance with laws, regulations and proper practices that could have a significant financial effect on the ability of this authority to conduct its business or management of its finances. Can I have a proposal to accept that, please? Councillor Jones, seconded by councillor Hart. All in agreement? Councillor Jackson, are you in agreement?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just reading.
Item four. We provided proper opportunity during the year for the exercise of electors' rights in accordance with the requirements of the accounts and audit regulations. We're in agreement? Can I have a proposal, please? Proposed by councillor Hart, can I have a second? Councillor Garvey. And can I have a show of hands, please? Thank you. Item five. We carried out an assessment of the risks facing this authority and took appropriate steps to manage those risks, including the introduction of internal controls and or external insurance cover where required. Can I have a proposal for that, please? Councillor Garvey, seconded by councillor Redfern. Can I have a show of hands, please, accepting that? Thank you. Item six. We maintained throughout the year an adequate and effective system of internal audit of the accounting records and control systems. We're all happy. Can I have a proposal of that, please? Councillor Hart, seconded by councillor Casicki. Can I have a show of hands, please? Thank you. Item seven. To appropriate action on all matters raised in reports from internal and external audit. Can I have a proposal for that, please? Councillor Garvey, can I have a second, please? Councillor Hart. And can I have a show of hands, please? Thank you. Item eight isn't applicable.
Sorry, no.
Oh, nine isn't applicable. Okay, okay. Said one to eight, well, three. Item eight, we considered whether any litigation liabilities or commitments, events or transactions occur occurring either during or after the year end have a financial impact on this authority. Where appropriate, have included them in the accounting statements. Do we agree with that? Can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Jones, seconded by councillor Hart. Do I have to fill it in?
You just confused us there, filling in the minute reference in its other text.
Well, hands just to show that. Item eight. Can I have a vote on item eight? Sorry, that was, I was so keen to get the signature there. Thank you for that. Section two.
Well, section two is the accounting stuff. B now.
So item B, to approve and sign section two of the annual return. Do I have to read this out?
Everyone's got the figures. Section two.
To state that I certified.
No, you just need to sign that, sign by the chair.
Are we, can I have a proposal to accept the accounting statement, 2324? Councillor Garvey, can I have a second, please? Councillor Proudlove. And can I have a show of hands, please? Councillor Jackson, are we happy? Thank you. My no signs.
It seemed good. Please spell carefully.
Okay, excellent. Right, item nine, to confirm the recommendation from the annual town meeting. And the recommendations are, is that the district councillor, oh, the town council should reply to residents of new buildings given the following suggestions regarding ongoing issues. First one is the district councillor should seek to resolve the missing street name. The county council should seek to resolve the one gritting. It's on yours, councillor Flunder. I think they used to have a grit bin, you see, but it hasn't been filled for a while. I think it is there. It hasn't been filled for a while. Yeah, the MP, there isn't an MP at this moment in time, it's dissolved. I know that because I had a reply through an email saying that she is no longer MP while the election period is on. And police and fire commissioner, we've got one of those, should be contacted regarding the house of multiple occupancy occupation currently used to accommodate ex-offenders. I do know that the leader of Staff Small's District Council has been contacted as well as a consequence of that. So I believe that elevated actions are being looked at and taken. Councillor Smith?
Yeah, we've got kind of no concrete evidence that the people that are in there are ex-offenders. They have got that information. So I'm just thinking if we can change that on that.
Do we know the ex-offenders as a council or, that's a presumption, isn't it?
I believe the residents know that, but I'm happy to change that. But it's the, it's the inquiries about the possible multiple occupation. I think that's the key issue there.
Yeah. The reference to ex-offenders was making inquiries about antisocial behaviour. Yeah, okay. We're happy, happy with that then?
Yeah.
Yes, in second.
Can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Jones, seconded, please. Councillor Smith. And a show of hands, please. Lovely. Thank you very much. It's unanimous. Item ten, to confirm the revised approach to public participation agreed at the Finance Strategy and Management Committee meeting in May, 2024. First recommendation was, which was agreed, was that the county council should continue with their informal meeting prior to the town council meeting and no longer report during the main town council session. Can I have a proposal for that? Councillor Redfern, can I have a second, please? Councillor Jackson, can I have a show? Are you got a comment to make?
Just a very quick one, because you were there, it's regarding councillor Flunder as well. We thought possibly half an hour gives you full half an hour before the full council, half till six, just an idea.
Yeah, that, that was, that, that was the sort of comment. Yes, yes. Yes, always close as, close as we can get. As a, as a kind of surgery.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We're meeting, so I won't be able to do it until seven or ten financially.
Okay, this could, so, yes. So can we have a show of hands if that's accepted? Okay, discussed, so, yes. So can we have a show of hands if that's accepted? That's unanimous, thank you. And the second recommendation was that the police should report to the town and community committee where further discussion can take place. Now I've got councillor Garvey and councillor Jones. councillor Garvey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got serious concerns about the police only reporting to the town and community committee. I think it's probably a very good idea that they can, they can be invited to the town and community committee, particularly to present on bits that are important, so what we're covering there that relates to the issues in town. However, I don't believe that we should remove them from public participation in the main council, prior to the main council meeting. Partly because it's a broadcast meeting, but it also is a meeting which the public can attend and if necessary, hear in person or ask questions within public participation. And therefore, I think it's an important aspect for, partly for accountability of the police to the community, but also for us every person here to see and hear it, rather than just within a committee. I think it has a place within the committee for detailed debate and discussion of topics that have been raised. As a general overview, I think it would be detrimental to remove it from the council meeting. I think there are possibly a benefit of having the report, written report presented beforehand, which would then make it easier or be available of the issues that were being raised, so we can ask more informed questions. And while I recognise that the officers that attend frequently can't answer those questions, they can at least record them and take them away or refer them back later. But I would not be happy to have the police only reporting to town and community. Thank you.
councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, what he said, really. I'm all but shortening this meeting because we're getting outrageously long. I'm hoping now that under your tenure, we might smarten things up a little bit. But I think the police should report to this full council. Because as councillor Garvey says, it can come and do presentations to TCC as well. I mean, public can come to that anyway, obviously can, you know, but probably go welcome it with the bitches anyway. But I think, I can't support moving it to TCC, so I think it should stay on full council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
councillor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't at this meeting either. So, so I'm just going off what I've read in the minutes, and I know it was, it was councillor Hawley that proposed it, councillor Hart seconded it. On the night of the inquest, there was a vote taken, there was one against, one abstention, and everybody else was happy for it to move. Now, the issues that councillor Garvey's brought up really don't hold a tremendous amount of water, because everything that can be done at the full council meeting can be done at the committee meeting. It's broadcast, members of the public can come if they want to, so I don't see. And the object of this exercise was to streamline this meeting, so councillor Hart's committee coming up next wasn't squeezed for time. And I think that was the reason behind it. I think we should, we should pass this tonight and see how we go with it. Maybe it's a major, major problem, we can always come back to it later.
councillor Rogers.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I hear what councillor Jackson's saying. On reflection, I personally think it should stay on full council, where all the councillors attend, or should all attend. But I'm prepared to go to trial period and then reassess it in two to three months' time, and so it goes. Okay.
councillor Smith.
Just to say, there wasn't a reason for looking to move that as well. And it was because there was a limited time period where the police were able to take part in the public participation. And moving it to a committee meant that we could have a discussion about what they were talking about, if there were any personal issues going on in the town, that we needed to have that, you know, a bit more in-depth, detailed discussion. But, you know, I do think that if there's any sort of issues, that we could maybe have a report at the beginning, like a standing agenda item from the police at town council, just giving the clip notes like we've had today, if the crime's down or crimes up or what.
councillor Redfern.
Thank you, Chair. I'm starting my late to right of the evening, so it was otherwise detained, as they say.
We're told, so that's absolutely fine.
What? I'm quite happy to, I don't know, it's the second councillor Wayne's suggestion, but we give it a trial period. I think one of the issues we've had particularly is, in some respects, a lack of information and a lack of debt to that particular part of the committee, where it's been quite difficult to grill down with the police staff. My only, if you like, slight concern is I would prefer the police officers concerned to be out there doing something and coming here and spending whatever amount of time the committee will take up of their precious time. I'd rather have them out there catching villains. Now, I know the people who come here will tell us, and I would encourage them to do so if they were to come to the committee meeting. Luke, it's really important, I'm only here for this set amount of time, because I've got things to do. Providing they do that to us, I have no problems in supporting councillor Wayne's suggestion. Or sticking with the original proposition, whichever is ruled, it's coming forwards.
Yes, the last speaker on this subject, and then we'll go to some kind of vote, is councillor Parks.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes. I, I, I think it's about looking about, at looking at the way it's done, personally. And with the greatest of respect, at the town council meeting, we get the PCSOs, who we know do everything, and they, and they very quickly give us a little summary, and it took up no time whatsoever, and I don't see why that would need to shift. What I am saying is, if you want a more substantive meeting or information from the town and community, you actually need a more substantive member of the police force to be there, because to be fair, the PCSOs have that very limited information, very little else. If you want them to have a higher level of conversation, something that you can debate, it's a bit unfair for Liam to be the one to face that. It should be actually the full-time members of the force. So if we don't have access to that, I think as it stands now, a very short summary, it didn't take up any time, and then something more detailed at town and community, there's no reason why you got, which I think is exactly what councillor Smith said. But ultimately, I think it's about, if you're going to make it a more substantive meeting, you need the police officers there. Thank you.
One of the things which was said as the reason if going to town and community, and one of the changes which was requested, is that, that very point of the shallowness of some of the information and the fact that they were unable to answer, to respond to detailed questions, was that it is a move towards submitting written questions beforehand. If anybody wanted to email them into the office, they'd be submitted in time to get actually a response to those questions, so that the results would be more substantive. So yes, that's correct. Now, I will bring back councillor Garvey for a very short final comment as the person who was looking for a change.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think what I've heard from everybody else is, I think most of us are on the same page here, that the very brief presentation given, that could be presented in advance, the written summary to be questioned, has a value at town council. But perhaps we should include as a standing agenda item on town and community the opportunity to call a more senior police officer, councillor Park suggests, to that committee, to account anything that's raised at the preceding town council meeting the week before. And I would put that as a formal proposal. But we retain the public participation brief summary from whoever is available, but add as a standing agenda item to the town and community committee, an item to review issues raised with the police and request the presence of a more senior officer. Thank you. I'll second that, Mr Mayor. If we can do that.
Just an amendment. Yep. councillor Smith.
Brief amendment. I know councillor Redfern brought up about taking police time. That means that the police might be attending to two meetings, two weekends, and two weeks in a row. I would amend that they submit the statement that they've made today with the crime figures that they would present to the town council in writing. We can look at them in the town council meeting and then decide whether anything needs to be discussed in the town community following that information. For further scrutiny, because that's the reason we wanted it to go to town and community treatment.
Can I have a second before the amendment, please? councillor Jackson, the second amendment.
I have my right to speak, Mr Chair.
You want to?
This will be the last, the last week. That's for that.
Yes. And we go to, we've got, we've got an amendment, we've got a proposal which has been seconded, and an amendment. You, you speak as the seconder, and then we go to the vote, we'll take the amendment first, and then the proposal from councillor Garvey.
Can I just add one thing to that, if I may? We'll put it as a standing agenda item at the beginning of the meeting, and all of the police are then free once that agenda item has been covered, to leave the meeting, so we're not taking too much police time.
councillor Jackson.
Yes. I'll take it then, you're accepting that the police come to the committee meeting rather than full council. With your statement just, not rather than full council, that we have the the proposal was that we retain very brief presentation that they give, which as councillor Park rightly points out, took two or three minutes, if that, because there is, because they're present, there is the opportunity to ask them questions on that, as well as having received it, perhaps in advance. But then we schedule as a standing agenda item, a more in-depth opportunity. That item can always be cancelled if there's nothing to actually raise at that committee, but it gives us the opportunity of a standing agenda item that requires the presence of a more senior officer who can answer questions that PCSOs can't. So I'm advocating the two, three minute slot that they have with an additional facility
where a more detailed interrogation of a specific issue that might have been raised preceding week at the council.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, before we go any further. We're just throwing this back to the finance committee. We took, Kevin spoke once already. I want to speak again. He spoke twice now, three times. You're only supposed to speak once. If it's going to be debated, if we're not happy with this, we should just reject it and put it back to finance.
What have we got on?
Another point, Mr Chair, I stood up and I said, procedurally, I am the last speaker as the seconded to the amendment. That, that should be how the rules go. That's how the rules should go. And so if people do want to speak, and you're quite prepared to allow them to speak, I'll sit down until everybody's finished.
That's it now. I think we've gone around in circles enough. So the amendment, can you just?
Yeah, yeah. I will, I will second the amendment, Mr Mayor. This was done to streamline the meeting. And councillor Hawley, in good faith, brought these, these suggestions forward. It was, it was thrashed out, and this came as another suggestion to help to streamline the particular meeting. Now, what came up tonight, that could have been sent in an email. And to take John's point, them two officers would have been out there counting the crews, right? That could have been done in an email. But the information we get from there, then we've got, then we can act on when it comes to the committee meeting, which seems to me a sensible way of doing it. And also, we can go certainly in a lot more depth with a committee meeting, rather we can in the more formal structure of the full town council. If we needed to go into confidential at short notice, it would be easier to do it at the committee meeting, rather than it would at the full council meeting, because we'd probably have to wait till councillor Hart's meeting had finished, or if there was members of the public, they'd have to go and come back again after the town council, if they were interested in staying for the, for the committee meeting. So to me, it streamlines it all, it makes sense. And I think councillor Rogers, I wasn't quite sure, he said try it for two or three months. But once we make this decision tonight, can't come back, I don't think, for six months anyway. So we make that decision tonight, and it can come back, like I said, in my first preamble, that we can look at it again if it's not working. But if you give it six months, and if people want to bring it back then, then fair enough. But for tonight, I think we should go with the proposal from finance and go along with that and go for the vote, Chair.
So the amendment was, the written submission only to the town council, followed by an invite as a standing order item to town and community for a more in-depth discussion. So that was, amendment was proposed by councillor Smith, it was seconded by councillor Jackson. Can I have a show of hands on that, please? Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I can have against? Or against? Any abstentions? Two abstentions. That is carried, written submission for town council, and they will be invited to attend as a standing item order on town and community. And then it's up to the council committee after six months to decide whether they want to propose a change. Okay, thank you. And finally, the final part in item ten, the public participation section of the agenda should not include feedback from agencies. This should be added to the main agenda and should be limited to 20 minutes. So do you have a proposer on that?
No, I'm sorry.
councillor Jones, seconded by councillor Jackson.
So I'll give somebody else a go, you know.
Looking around, I was, can I have a show of hands to accept that, please? Excellent, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Item eleven, to confirm a change to the standing order for DV Delta Victor, recommended at the Finance Strategy and Management Committee meeting in May 2024. Can I have a proposer for that, please? councillor Jackson, seconded by councillor Rogers. Can I have a show of hands, please? It's accepted. Any abstentions? One at one abstention. And one against. absolute always worth abstained. Councillor, yeah, I got councillor against, that's right. Okay, lovely, thank you. Item twelve, audit and accounts. There's a list of expenditure to approve the accounts paid in June 2024. A list of expenditure over £500. Expenditure less than £500.
Supplementary.
And there is a copy of supplementary accounts. Expenditure over £500. And expenditure less than £500. And there is a small amount of expenditure on credit card on the reverse side of the page. Can I have a proposer to accept those, please? councillor Hart, can I have a second, please? councillor Parks, thank you very much. Can I have a show of hands, please? But thank you very much. All unanimous. That concludes the council meeting. Time is? Seven oh seven.